Do I have any corrections for the minutes?
At the very, the terminal, I put commissioning room, so should you please help me.
Where are you?
There are no corrections, do I have a motion to approve?
I'm in proof of notes, that's correct.
Do I have a second? Second, any discussion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. I have a note here that we need to okay Lisa Feldcamp to represent the county, I guess, or to work on the county's behalf for a, to the Dane Hansen Foundation, the Post-Rock Commission Community Foundation, that's for rescue, isn't it, Dawn?
Yes, applied for grant.
Yeah, for rescue. I think we probably should have a motion to, to have her act on behalf of the county, or to complete the requirements for the grants, do I have a motion to?
We're, we're talking about having Lisa Feldcamp draft a grant application.
She's going to plan, yeah, she's going to do a grant application.
She did, she worked on that airport grant, Department of Defense.
She volunteered her services.
Oh, I thought that was my glow hair.
Well, she, she helped write the name.
I just thought he reported that they did that themselves, so how many grants has she done for the county, just that one?
Yeah, that's the only one I know she's done for the county.
Well, I think she's applied, they've applied several times to whatever grant that they received this last time, she's, it's a joint effort between the city fire and the rural fire.
Does the person who drafts the grant get paid like they do when they do it for the health department?
No.
No.
This is a volunteer.
She, she kind of doing it on behalf of the city, the city shares and the
Okay.
Fire station and the rescue. I would move to approve Lisa Feldcamp to work on the grants for the rescue squad, Dane Hansen and Post-Rock.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Been moved and second, any questions, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion is carried. I have a sheet that is asking for my signature for ACH transaction files. ACH is health, right, Dawn?
It's for the payroll, for the Citizen State Bank to do our payroll.
Oh, for the, oh, okay.
Anually.
Yeah.
Well, payroll is automatically deposited into these accounts, so we haven't agreed with them.
And it requires the authorization of the board of county commissioners, as well as Dawn Harlow, county clerk, Deborah Zacco, accounts payable, and county treasurer, Leanne Bishop.
Through which bank?
Citizen State Banks, the one we always use.
Out of, out of payroll or employee benefits, or?
Payroll.
It's payroll, they do our direct deposit. So they can initiate ACH deposits.
I would move that the chairman's on the ACH form for the indirect deposits, Citizen State Bank.
Do I have a second? I'll second, any question, discussion?
This is the same bank that you've been using for your entire terms?
They're the ones that do the payroll, yes. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carried.
When and where does someone discuss a contract like that before it's brought to the commission for approval, to know that that's, that that's going to be, I mean, we don't have it on our agendas, so how does anyone know who's contracting when they bring these things to the table, just something like that? Who has, who has those discussions?
I guess it was just an annual, it's an annual requirement that the bank needs to sign off on, so we originally had, I guess, the conversation, we originally started with them previously, Bank of Tuskegee, to kind of give you a breakdown, Bank of Tuskegee used to do all of our payroll, we had all of our payroll drawn out of Bank of Tuskegee and all of our accounts payable at Ossis and Tuskegee, well, when we decided to go to direct deposits on the request of the employees, Bank of Tuskegee at the time, we were not a big enough employer for them to initiate direct, to do the direct deposits. Now, so we contracted with Citizen State Bank to do that, and it has worked ever since.
How, how long is that contract, just out of curiosity?
I honestly don't know that I can get that information.
But you were here when it was Tuskegee and changed to Citizens?
Yeah, because we used to do.
Do you remember how long ago that was?
I would say five or six years, I think, just off the top of my head, has it been that long?
Just, time goes fast.
But then, both of you would have been here.
What's that?
Right, 10 years ago?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Didn't I just ask that question, if they were here, and they said they'd used the same bank the whole time, and now it was 10 years, oh, okay.
It just.
I honestly don't know when we went to direct deposit, we didn't look at that.
Okay.
Mara.
I'm sorry, K-Camp, K-Camp.
Yes, that's okay.
I was trying to think who you were.
Mara Chambers.
Who, yeah, Mara Chambers, from K-Camp, yes.
I'm Risk Management for K-Camp, and the reason why I asked for time today is because Lincoln County received a K-Camp Loss Ratio Award for 2016, a loss ratio is the total value of claims divided by your, your annual contribution, so I know it seems kind of odd to do this at the end of '17, and I apologize for that, but we let claims finalize and close before we do that, so your loss ratio was less than 4%, so I have a $600 check here, and I also have the report from the annual meeting, which, it's just a written report, there's some information in here, and the inside back page is where it announces the loss ratio award winners, so I will just pass that over, and if you don't mind, I would also like to take five, 10 minutes to give you an update on your usage of K-Camp's risk management programs, so I've got some little update sheets. I have some notes on my copy here, so attorney assist, the first thing on the list, I think you're aware that is our complimentary service where you can contact an attorney paid by K-Camp to consult on legal questions, it looks like in '17, you used the service 43 times, now this is pretty much supervisors that can call, you know, somebody in a supervisor role, commissioners call, the county counselor often calls because, interestingly, they will speak attorney, so, in any case, you can see that you're using that program very well, we have some counties that don't use it as often, my personal opinion is, since you use it so much, that's why you have a little loss ratio. The next one, the Risk Avoidance Grant, this is $2,000 a year that we set aside for all members to use to purchase products or services that will help reduce their risk of having a claim, like damage to their, to the county's property, or injury or damage to others, so sometimes I do get requests for things that are more geared towards personnel safety, so safety, you know, hard hats and chaps for working with chainsaws and that kind of thing, I hate to decline those, because I care about your employee's safety too, but because K-Camp doesn't insure that risk, we have to focus on, you know, so for example, the sheriff's department purchased grow guards this year, grow guards reduce the damage to the vehicle by 50%, so in addition to that, the next time that vehicle, say, runs into a deer, which is what happens a lot, not only is the damage to the vehicle itself less, we'll also replace the grow guard as part of the insurance, so. Looks like you're not using K-Camp Online University, it is possible that you're using it with K-Work, instead, K-Work also has courses available through, on, through the same group, it's local gov u, but in case you're interested in using it, I did bring some course lists, this is for 2017, I've actually recently asked for some additional courses, so there will be an updated list coming out early in the first of the year, but as you can see, there's quite a lot of opportunity, these are, these are online courses, so you just need internet access, completely free of charge, any employee is eligible to take the courses, it's also kind of a learning management system, so if a, if a supervisor wanted to put together a learning program for his or her own employees, that person could have their own account and could actually assign courses and track the progress of the employees, so you're welcome to look through that, you're welcome to call me later with questions, let's see, what else, law enforcement tuition reimbursement, this program, it used to be a percentage of contribution, but we changed it in 2017, just for simplicity, but also we think it's valuable, so a lot of times, in fact, every year, or I think it's on a biannual basis, law enforcement, sworn officers are required to take educational courses, a lot of them are free, some of them are not, and so we would like to reimburse the county for the courses that cost, so some examples are like terrorism workshops, or continue, it's basically continuing education for law enforcement officers, and it works for corrections too, so it doesn't have to just be field, it can be correction, it looks like the county has not used those funds recently, I did email several times, just reminding the folks who hadn't used it yet, so technically, the deadline was Friday, but if you have an in with the sheriff, and he has any courses that he's taken in 2017 that he could turn in, have him call me, because I'm going to ask him to date it to, to date it December 15th and email it to me, just, I want to have like, I wanted to come in under the deadline.
Do any of these law enforcement classes through K-Camp combine with their required?
If they do, yes, they do, so the way that works though, they are required to take 40 hours of continuing education under C-Post, something P's Officers, I forget what that stands for, the sheriff's.
C-Post.
C-P-O-S-T, yeah, because of the way C-Post works, Kansas C-Post, their, only half of their education can come from online courses, the other half has to come from, now, it doesn't, I mean, they're welcome to take as many of these as they want, we don't, there's no limit, but you can only apply 20 hours of online to your C-Post requirement, they're, you know, it's a, it's a pretty active job, so I don't think they want all of their continuing education coming from their computer, yeah, and then the last one, Rhodes Scholar Tuition Reimbursement, I actually sent out a check recently, so what this is for, the Kansas County Association, Kansas Association of Counties, in conjunction with Kansas LTAP, Local Technical Assistance Program, has the Kansas Rhodes Scholar Program, and that's actually a program that has three levels, and a person who's enrolled in the entire program will basically learn all kinds of things, both technical and supervisory, for right now, I am encouraging anyone of our members to, that takes these classes, to submit their receipts for reimbursement, now this one is up to 529 for Lincoln County, this one is based on your annual contribution, and it's $50 per person per class, I did, I cheated a little bit, and I asked the KAC and also LTAP to send me lists of attendees throughout the first half of the year, and Lincoln County had plenty of people that attended, in fact, I might even have, oh, it was 14 people completed gravel road maintenance in April, and so because of my limit, I wasn't able to do, you know, the full $50 per, but I was able to do the limit for the county, so do you, does anybody have any questions about any of our programs?
Maybe the law enforcement training one, Jennifer had hosted, our county attorney had hosted a, a training where other officers and our officers were allowed to go, if there's expenses tied to that, to get the speaker, do you assist with that?
No, unfortunately, what, the only thing that this program pays for is the actual tuition fees for the officers, so even in a situation where officers travel out of state, I can't pay for the travel, the hotel, the meals, I can only pay for the tuition fees, and it's possible that.
If we set it up to where we require people to pay a nominal fee, then we could probably ask for assistance with that.
Absolutely. Well, what I can, if you are charging your own officers to attend the training, then I could reimburse Lincoln for each of its own officers that attend the training, and then, of course, if there are other member, K-Camp member counties whose officers attend, then I can reimburse them directly, but unfortunately, the otherwise, I can't really do it, um, that said.
Because I think most of their training is free, it's just the mileage and the time to get there.
Right, you know, now that I'm saying that, under the law enforcement tuition reimbursement program, I could not reimburse for hosting it, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't negotiate something outside of these regular risk damage programs, so if you do that again, feel free to call me, and I'll see whether we can assist with it.
Hopefully so, hopefully I have any.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, thank you for the time, thank you for your membership.
Well, thank you for your work too, we have been satisfied with K-Camp's response to us in times of need, so, thank you.
Good, no problem, I wish I could take credit for that, I've just been with the company since February, so I'm sure the response is mostly Jess and David, but, you know, next year, I'll take some credit.
Okay, all right, okay, that's fine.
All right, thank you very much.
It'll even get better then, won't it? Thank you.
Uh-huh, got you, Bob. Pretty good shot.
It was, I wanted to pay attention.
That was a K-Camp tin, I want everybody to, K-Camp tin. Don't know if they're good.
Was not used the one, sir.
I don't think I have one.
Manitas?
Dawn, when you list the tax abatements for publication, what, what do you have to list, just the, the total abatement of the debt? The account number, or what?
That very top number.
Your control number.
We can list about anything, but it's just, I guess, all of the other areas. The only ones that I think would be, seem to be the intentions. Very rarely should we have any.
Okay, so we have two vehicle trade-ins. So these, okay, so this one, for example, Dawn, this is a gravel pit, it says tax for a gravel pit, not with a current lease, prior to change taxing unit 011, what does that mean?
That's the taxing unit, unless it was taxed.
Which means?
I believe that's the city of.
So.
Oh, 011, sorry, I believe that's like saltwater or stuff.
Yeah, the township, it says to list it, township or city, and it's not listed.
And I think that is one that if you read it, I think it's a fascinating description that they have, like in promilers.
The wrong what?
The wrong landowner. The second page is the appraiser's notes, and it will say at the top what the reason for.
It just says, tax for a gravel pit, not a current lease. Which means that we don't have.
They're closed, we're closed today.
But it doesn't even have the land use.
It's just the, the appraiser, that's the appraiser's form, they don't have to fill out everything completely, this is the actual abatement, and then it will have all of the system information, so here's appraisal prior to correction, appraisal after, so they combined the AR and the CR together.
What does AR mean?
AR is agriculture rule, and CR is commercial.
How are they combining agriculture and commercial?
Well, because this was, shouldn't have been commercial, it's assessed at a higher rate.
So this is for the whole parcel, this is the agricultural value, this is the commercial value that they assessed for the gravel pit, that doesn't, that is not under correctly, or that.
Or that doesn't exist, or it's closed, or whatever, I don't really know what's wrong with the pit.
So.
And then, so then it comes over here, and your numbers aren't going to add up directly because the commercial property is assessed at a different per acre than what your agling is.
Right, but the 1550 here for commercial, she's saying she.
That's what it was before.
Turned it into egg, she turned that.
Yeah.
So how do, where's the acreage to determine?
I, they do that, so, if you want.
No acreage given, that's interesting. Well, no, it's only 60 some dollars worth, but it's just.
We were only in that pit for a short time.
I'm sorry, I haven't, 100?
I actually thought it was on the wrong landowner, so that's interesting.
Taking off 376, that's the.
The total value net change, that's just value, so, okay, this is, this is appraised, and then this is assessed, so this tells you what the full value is, and then what the assessed, so that's the amount that's being taxed, new, or existing, being taxed, and then the change, and then this is the net change.
Taking off the 388.
Yeah, so basically, they added 12 here, and took off 388, so by the time, because this is assessed at commercial, and I think she said it was, what, $1,200 an acre, where agling does not necessarily, $1,200 an acre, I don't know what it is, but. She can explain that a little bit better than I can.
Morning, Deborah.
Health Department.
Health Department, I'm looking.
Okay.
Ladonna has looked at these two, right?
She has.
Okay.
And she said she'll look again, anything that you see that you like?
I looked through them, I didn't see anything that I thought needed to be changed.
Okay.
I think there's something in there, medical wise, that would be.
First, we updated some information on like, the breastfeeding requirements through the state that they, they do and whatnot, those were things that she added this year and whatnot.
Education requirements?
Uh, no, that they promote and support breastfeeding, breastfeeding families.
They do it.
That wasn't the need before.
They do do education.
Do a lot of that education and whatnot, it's a requirement that they, that her and her staff promote that.
Yeah, I thought I read that on there.
It is, it is, that was a new thing, that was one of the things that she added this year, and some other rewording and some verbiage and whatnot, was there anything else with the health department that you guys saw that you would, that was pretty easy department to get through, I figured the next one is a bigger one, we could do road and bridge next, do you, do you want me to email to you and to you, and Aljo, do you want, I did print those.
Thank you.
I can do that, we can look at those next. Do the same thing again, you guys take them home, take a look, whatever you want, we'll take a look at them again next week, well heck, health department was easy, that one.
Well, we won't next week.
Well, next meeting.
Second, second, second of July, or January, yeah, because plan to have, next week's short, we'll only be doing payroll and payables and transfers if we need them.
Okay, that sounds fine, so I'll email the two of you, all of, all of the ones for, for road and bridge, all that works, whatever, that's the one thing that I didn't, didn't That's the one thing that I didn't... Didn't... Or I... We did. We did... Because since you call it Public Works, maybe we should change. And I can go back to Roden Bridge, whatever you guys decide. But I did... I'm not sure how you wanted to work that, so I'll...
I thought it was under Highway Department.
It was. It's... Sometimes you guys call it highway, sometimes you call it Roden Bridge, sometimes we call it Public Works. Whatever you guys can provide there for assistance for how you want to... I mean, you call Michael the main position, the head position.
It's all under Public Works.
Director of Public Works. And you brought in landfill and the transfer station into that. So to me, we should probably change that. And if you don't want that, I'm okay with that, too. So I'll leave these with Aljo, and I'll email both of you.
Good.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else, Deborah?
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Are we going to encourage any of this online training for the departments?
I think we can.
I think so, too, especially if...
Especially if...
Some of the law enforcement ones are already counting toward their continuing education, and they're free through this. But it looks like just about any department could have... Could benefit from it.
Almost a hundred percent sure a law enforcement is doing the paperwork. And I don't know why I think that.
She didn't give the website on this?
I think you just get K Camp, can't you?
I believe so, but let me look.
I think... I think it's on K Camp.
And I'm not sure if it's this one that has to have... Deborah has to log you on and create you an account, or if that's paperwork. For some reason, I think each employee has to be built up.
Business continuity. Maybe we should self-impose that one.
David, did you need something?
Just wanted to communicate about the burn ban that's in effect at this time.
I see no reason to...
Lift it.
Lift it.
No, no. Just got off the weather... Phone with the Weather Service in Wichita. And then it said possibility of flurries late Thursday night. But again, gusts to forty, and nothing that would cover the ground or exponentially stop the controlled burn ban. And then they said the chance of Saturday and Sunday, again, light snow flurries, but nothing accumulative. So I'm just going to continue to... Or asked to continue to have the burn ban still in effect.
I think so. Tell me get some more sure.
Thank you.
That's all you have to say. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Yep.
I would move away through the baked up stolen one thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Not second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Have you looked at the bills?
No.
Sorry, I haven't moved there. I'd like you to look in.
That's all right.
You guys saw where you...
Did I miss anything? I was looking through the bill.
I wasn't gonna do that to the red one again.
Yes, it stays because... Take a pass a lot. There you go.
I gotta be careful with those because I'm worried. Chip collins. So many things I would say. Two nuts. You know how much that stinks, dude?
Yeah.
I'm just excited. My face has been swelled at this point. I had, like, a really huge drag come last week. And then I got reading books Saturday night.
Thank you.
And luckily, I caught it in time, so I didn't swell up. I just got really... So Thursday, I get to get a fortune out of a specialist.
Wonderful.
Merry Christmas. We have bright?
Merry Christmas, too.
As a follow-up to that executive session.
Yeah.
This is the information that I think... So, yes, we did, but not for the circumstances that was set. So I didn't know if you guys want to read that or not read that. I just... That where to start is the two conversations that we've had about that executive session, so...
Do you have anything today, Dawn, for us?
I do not.
Oh, I thought you were talking about questioning the executive session being conducted properly. You're talking about...
Yeah.
Actions that took place after.
Wondering if we have ever paid out leave time. Okay. These are the only things you found in the last, how many years? This is two thousand and four.
Did you ever check to see how many were left on that pre-two thousand?
I did not. But I... I think Deborah and I discussed three, but I can go ask that. Do you want to know how many hours?
I would say how many hours and the number of people.
Do we know the dollar of liability amount of that? Can we figure that, or does that...
Do you want it figured?
It doesn't have to be today.
No.
If you need any time.
How does the auditor handle that? Does he... I guess I'd have to look back in the audit and see. Surely, he makes a note of that, doesn't he?
Yeah, I believe so, because at the end of the year, we have to give them the outstanding in each department.
If there's only three, I think I would be in favor of getting rid of it, but...
The question then, because it's locked in, like, when they get ready to leave. The handbook says that when they leave, that they're paid out at their pre-two thousand... Their December thirty-first two thousand salary. So this change occurred in January first of two thousand and one.
Is that what's in the handbook right now?
Yes. And if they utilize their leave time right now, they have to use... Because they're going to use it or lose it the time that they accumulate. They have to use it first. But then if they run out of that time and they need the pre-two thousand time, or two thousand and one, I apologize. Then they get paid at their current rate of pay for any time that they used during the calendar year. Because that would not be fair to say... You're earning ten dollars an hour now, and you're earning seven at the time. So they get paid that, which become a point of conversation this week because the handbook doesn't specifically say that when they utilize the time during a current calendar year, they get paid during the calendar year. And we really do need to update the handbook, and...
Yes. We brought that up earlier this year.
Some of the department heads have said that they would like to have input to that, so... But I kind of wonder if would maybe be a good process is to take the handbook that is currently divided amongst however many pages we have, divide by eleven, and us tackle that section of handbook, so many pages a month. But the department heads would like to have input. I don't know how you guys feel about that. That's not my choice.
I don't think... You know, they can have the input. They don't have the final decision, but they can... I would be interested in the input.
And then maybe have it done by November, so then in November, we can update and do the handbook in December. Or we do a change where maybe July first, the new handbook goes into effect, or something like that. Our end of year gets very busy, so...
I think we should have it done before the employee meeting and discuss it as part of that day, because the...
Make any changes?
Right, or just... Or even to get some feedback just from the employees as well. It doesn't... I mean, it can be approved that year, but then it can be looked at again. It can be looked at yearly. And if we use... If we utilize that time where we're already using that... Was it Columbus Day? There could have been a little bit more presentation internally. We did presentations externally to the group as far as insurance and other group functions, but internally speaking, we didn't really cover much except for the changes in the healthcare plan, which was appropriate for this year. But I think I would like to see it be done before October. And as far as taking a section at a time, maybe by heading instead of just by pages. Whatever that particular section of...
It's just the idea to have a...
Split it up.
Some work, yeah.
I think we should... We could start scheduling it on the agenda as we have been doing with the job description. That's worked pretty well, I believe.
You're gonna wait till we get done with the job description?
Next year, maybe start in the beginning of the year after, yeah.
What's the desire for department heads? Do you wish them to look at them and offer some suggestions, or do you...
I'd like to hear the input.
So probably what we should do is start working on them before you start working on them, so that we can...
Well, the department heads are now going to be required with the new job descriptions to come monthly. So over the next few months, we can hear, we can have some of that conversation with the department heads.
Are you wanting department heads to meet as a group with you? Or individually?
Well, I think before we do any finalizing on the handbook, we ought to meet with them as a group, probably.
I agree. Probably closer to the time when we have our meeting next year. But prior to that, we can be discussing with them on a continuing basis if we add it to our agenda. Any changes that we've noticed or have worked on, and if not, just skip over it.
Yeah, I would... I would go visit with them and have them start looking through it and writing in some changes that just arrived, and then we can look at it.
So what we're looking at is accumulated leave time. Questioning whether or not we would pay out this pre-accumulated leave time. But these had to do with pre-two thousand and one. We're now talking about accumulated leave time.
This is...
There is none after, but...
This is all what we're talking about.
You're saying there are only three people left?
I believe, but don't hold me to that.
Okay.
I will... I can either, A, have Deborah go get that information now... I will, I can either A, have Deborah go get that information now, and we can discuss it, or B, I can bring it back.
I think you need to bring it back, Dawn, so...
Yeah.
But are we talking about making a consideration of paying everyone who has that accumulated and being...
I think we just need to see the numbers and see what...
See the numbers and see if we can afford to pay it all out, or show...
Or how we can do it.
You know, there's...
Well, wouldn't we, wouldn't we be making that just...
In the past, there were people that had $5,000 worth of pre-2000 leave.
But the payroll comes out of each department's budget, correct? It's not an employee benefits pay.
No, I think...
No.
It's a salary, it's a paycheck pay. So, really, how do you even make that decision? Because each department would have to, we would have to know if their own budget would for this year. So, maybe we should find that out sooner than later, though, because we have two meetings left.
We're not, maybe just this year.
Well, then how would you know about next year's budget early in the year?
Yeah, I think we could do...
Without considering employee changes?
Get the numbers and look wherever out it is, kind of the budget for the department one.
It would be better to do it when you know you have it now than to try to make a decision at the beginning of the budget year.
Very close.
If we do handbook in October, how about we make it a goal to be done by July? So, then that way, we have the entire month of August to print handbooks that is.
Morning, Michael.
Morning.
Come on in, we're ready for you.
Morning, Bob.
Morning, morning.
Morning.
Hello.
You all ready?
Yep.
You're ready. Went out and met with Tim and Sandra, and a third grew up a pit last week, and was going to measure with the wheel. She had already measured it. She said there's really no need in me going and tromping through the weeds trying to measure it myself. I looked at her data. It compares with what I would have measured, so. And it came out to around two acres of active use, and the rest I would call wasteland, but...
Have we done any reclaiming out there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've reclaimed it as we want.
You know what? How much did the appraiser estimate?
I think they said it was around 10.
10?
Mm-hmm. That was basically everything that was used as a pit at some point.
Well, thank you for following up on that.
Yes.
I'm glad to see that. Do we need to, are there others that we need to look at? We just received an abatement earlier about someone who got taxed who's not currently in a lease.
Get reclosed goods.
Oh, goods.
Did you ever, I was just reading this and it reminded me, follow up on what we're going to do for road signs? We were talking about beginning with the intersection at 18, so that people turning off of the highway could at least be on that road with signage?
Yeah, I sent in a list of signs for estimation, and I haven't received that.
Like you did with the project out on the hill?
Yes.
Okay. What, who, what company is that?
Oh, well, I can't remember if it's National Sign or DC Holso.
Okay.
Follow up with that one, though.
Have you visited with the appraiser's office on this since you...
Not since I met with Sandra, though. That was Friday afternoon, so...
I guess, I guess I would encourage you to have a discussion with them, so we can see if we can figure out some way to come to a, an agreement on how much is going to be considered commercial and what is going to be considered waste. Where we have this big discrepancy, I guess I think that we need to try to figure out some way to justification for one way or the other, not only to help the appraiser out, but to help the landowner out and then also the county. You might visit with Rhonda or Trug and see what, what we can do, what we can come up with. What else you got, Michael?
Doing a little bit of research, not real extensively, but I know that other municipalities throughout the state are using these cooperative purchasing groups and agreements to purchase supplies and equipment. And there's three different companies I included here. One is the NJPA, one is HGAC Buy, and the other is US Communities. And essentially, all these companies have already put all of these merchandise or supplies or services out to bid and is acceptable in the state of Kansas for government pricing.
So, do we, do we pay a fee to belong to these groups?
No, you don't.
Do you know what counties are using which ones?
I do not. I believe you can request a list. I believe one of them had it on their website, but I did not print it out.
What exactly, when you say merchandise, what exactly are you looking to buy with a cooperative purchase?
Essentially, it's everything from supplies to equipment. So, you know, if we need to get out our cleaning supplies or toilet paper or whatever, you know, there's companies from that all the way up to buying a dozer, an excavator, motor grinders, and stuff like that. And the good thing about this is, at least with the NJPA and the US Communities, you still work with your local supplier to get the national pricing on it. So, you know, whether it's UniFirst, that's out of Salina that does some of our cleaning supplies and stuff, Caterpillar, John Deere, Motu, whatever it may be.
So, if you're part of the cooperative, they all in a similar region order their bulk quantity to one particular location, and they, and they'll be your distributor?
I, from the way I understand it, is you tell them that you are using the NJPA, and you do the paperwork direct through the supplier, and they honor it. It's not like they stockpile it and have it there through the national bid, but as you use it, they honor the national pricing.
So, is this a subsidized purchase? This is a, I'm not sure. Typically, a cooperative, when you make a bulk purchase, it in the...
It's not necessarily bulk purchasing, you know? It's like our monthly service charge for UniFirst would go through the NJPA pricing, and we would get that pricing instead of what we are currently paying for.
But if bulk didn't play a part in it, they wouldn't care if you were cooperative or not. They would just be soliciting your business. So, they're soliciting you to join a group, so that the group, so I'm just wondering what, why that reduced price? I guess there aren't any descriptions on here, but...
Do you think they have a deal where you can piggyback on them or some equipment and stuff?
State contracts, I think.
Set up on?
I think that's available, yeah.
I'm not saying you personally have to purchase in bulk. I'm saying they're soliciting different governmental groups, nonprofit, education, and other, any local government agency to be a part of this purchasing group, this cooperative effort. So, if you're saying that you can still use local distributors, I'm, I'm just confused about that, because I'm not sure, I mean, the money has to come from somewhere. Oh, they're doing RFPs for you, okay. Vendors realize substantial efficiencies through their ability to respond to one NJPA solicitation and request for proposal, RFPs, that will potentially earn thousands of sales opportunities. From these efficiencies, vendors pay an administrative fee to NJPA calculated as a percentage of sales processed through the competitively solicited procurement contracts awarded and held by the vendor. So, the vendors themselves are paying to belong to the organization. You're participating as a purchaser, potential purchaser. Okay.
Are you aware of any counties that are doing this?
Always at that conference, out KEC, they discussed this.
That's what I wonder, where are you going?
There are some counties that are using it. There's one county that just completed a vehicle purchase and another one that was in the works. And I believe that was through the Houston Galveston, the HEGU to see by on the vehicles. They said that when it comes to passenger vehicles, that that cooperative offers much better pricing than any of the others.
And those vehicles come from your local dealer?
You know, like our local Chevy dealer would come through, Lloyd Motor or whatever. I think you can pick who you're going to be using as your local vendor, and they still honor the warranties and take care of all that at a local level.
I'm sure it would be worth looking into.
David Dove had come down and asked if he could purchase up of this as well, if anybody else in the county was. I told him at this point in time, yeah.
It's starting to get more public awareness on it, from what it sounds like. I think they've existed for years, but I was unaware exactly how they worked.
That's all I have for this week.
Bobby, I think.
Yeah, just trying to work there. We're trying to get that bulk bridge up there around 20th finished up here before it gets cold. They're drilling some holes and try to get some cement pumped in Wednesday, get that finished up then. Other than that, been getting some spot gravel up around in North West part of the county up through there. Unless they're selling, and they're hauling some sand, spotting some sand in around. East of the lake up in that hills back up in there today. Hey, I've been working on some, churning up and cutting some trees and, you know, working on pulling some trash and stuff out of the channels and end of bridges and stuff while we're working in the areas where that's plugged up and stuff, getting them out. All we've got the equipment there and what we can get on some of that. equipment there and what we can get on some of that. And they're about to get, get the stuff to fix that rotor tractor, they're steering on it, and he's just about getting it swapped from one machine over to the other, should be getting it ready to go here next day or two, so have it running again. And, oh, I guess we got a axle real bad on one of our trailers, we hold excavator and skid steer and stuff around on, so we got a new axle coming for them, fix them up, so. And I just normal, there are stuff, working on a few signs, and trees, and whatnot around. Been testing for gravel all over up in there, and so far, we haven't had any look till...
Where?
Up around blocks and Ansel, Richard Ansel's up in there, around Vesper area there, different areas around there.
Are you looking there particularly because you have a project that you want to do there?
No, just to have some gravel available to repair roads when we need it, because we've got a, pretty much had a go with blocks, there's no more in there, we're at fault for years, so we're trying to locate some more. They wanted us to test on the north side of the road and to south of the cemetery there, Vesper Cemetery.
Who does the testing, you do?
Bobby Zacko's on the whole right now. I go and check with him when he gets holes dug and stuff, and see what we find.
Okay. So do we have plans to retrieve any of the gravel that we have piled in any of the other pits?
Well, we're, like I said, running out there, so we don't have anything piled there, just a few rock and stuff we sorted out, or riprap and stuff. And we're gonna have to go pile some more up, I heard the roof brick up there, they hauled the last of it up last week, so we're gonna get moved up there and repile some more there. And there, right now, our oldie's pit out here, we got some piled in there, but not a whole lot yet. He's kind of reclaiming a bunch of that area right now, too, so. So we're just trying to get something on hand to have when we need some in a different location, so we don't have to haul across the county all the time.
What about our workforce to the end of the year? Are we, do we have a lot of people that need to use at time, or are we...
Pretty current. Oh, we've got a few that do. Most of them are working on it, trying to get it done, so they're not carrying any over. I think most of them are getting it down, or will be down by the first year, so we don't have any carryover.
Well, they'll have carryover, they just won't lose.
Yeah, they can carry some, but they can't carry all of them.
Won't be over the excess amount.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that we will have people available to work if we would happen to have a major problem that last week.
Yeah.
It's like a snowstorm, maybe? Little foot of snow.
Yes, somebody was at the theater on Saturday saying 13 inches was forecasted, is that really true?
I haven't heard anything.
I have heard it, but I don't listen to the news a lot.
I heard the forecasting outfit out of Oklahoma, been throwing all kinds of stuff out there this year.
Okay, we won't meet Tuesday after Christmas, we'll meet the end, but I think unless you have something, emergency, 2nd of January, we'll meet. We'll be in the 29th to close out, but that's about all we'll be doing, hopefully.
Do you have any sort of, either of you, like a comprehensive list of the jobs from this year, just 2017?
Have what?
A list of the jobs from 2017. Do you keep any kind of log?
Yeah.
Major projects?
Yeah, don't have anything, I just, list of where we need to gravel and stuff, and have gravel and stuff through the year.
I got your, I got your map of where we have gravelled. How do you keep your list of the other road repairs?
I just, I like it.
And just in your notes?
I like a book here, like this, just keeping listed in there, what we've done, and what we've got to do, and stuff like that.
I'm just interested to know, the gravel that we put on the Dead End Road on 220th and Oak, was that, was that on the list as a project that needed done this year?
Well, that was on a request you handed me, that Mr. Jeffers had sent in requesting that be done, and talked with him and told him we would work it into our schedule through the year, when we were kind of in between jobs, or hauling this way, we'd bring some in. If we were hauling out, coming by there, we could bring around in at night, or different things like that.
So just whenever you were coming through?
Yeah, like I say, if we had a break between jobs, we would just go ahead and catch it, because everyone's gonna take...
So did you add just a little bit at a time on different sections of his road?
Yeah, that's all he wanted, he just had those black spots out there where the gravel would, or wore off, or washed off, whatever.
So nobody took like a designated day, and particularly hauled specifically for that project?
Yeah, like I say, when we were between things, I sent them out there to do it, said we do that road.
On different, just different times you were passing through, or you made a specific project out of it and worked on it?
Yeah, we just did it, like I say, we started one afternoon, they finished another project, and had time to work well on that, so I put it well on, and finished it up the next day, while they were moving other equipment and stuff around.
So how, so how does, so if one, if someone just writes into the commission like that and says they're concerned about the road, I mean, I'm not aware that we made any particular decision about doing a project on that road, but basically what you're saying is if we pass along any concerns, that you'll take care of it in that manner, make a project out of it, send people out there that day, send resources on the day that you deem necessary, not a partic, I know you can't give a particular...
Yeah, like I say, most of the projects, we got a special project, we just do as it kind of works in our schedule, if we're in this area, we do this, if we're over here, we'll try to work that.
So how do you determine if the, if the request for gravel is legitimate or not?
You handed me a letter from him, and had me contacting about getting it done, so I talked to him, and we'll work it in whenever you, we can work it in, and so even...
And you looked at the road and validated the need?
Uh huh.
You did, or you did?
I believe both of us were out there at some point.
Yeah.
So what was the need on that road? I mean...
Just bare dirt spots that had gravel wore off, washed off, and wore off, after I don't know how many years, I never looked back when it was gravelled.
Is anybody live up there?
Um, is that, I don't, I don't think so. Does someone live on that road?
Keith Jeffers residence, one of his residences.
He lives there?
Not all the time, but part of the time, and he's got tenants that go back there.
It's a hunting lodge?
No, it's not a hunting lodge.
That's probably where it is.
I don't know where that come from.
Oh, so it's just a home that's...
It's a road that's been gravelled for years.
It's been gravelled.
That we're still adding gravel to, I understand that, I'm just saying, what is the purpose of the, what's back there at the end of that road? There are no houses along it, as far as what the map says, right?
He goes back there and stays part of the time when he's in this area.
He comes to...
He lives in Missouri.
He lives in Missouri. So he comes and visits out here, so this is kind of like a...
He's down there, and then he comes back here.
It's a little vacation spot for him?
And then, he has renters haul cattle in and out of there, rent farm ground, they all go in and out of there, light company goes in and out of there, propane people haul in there, it was all stated in the letter.
So there's a lot of traffic on that road, I take it, huh?
Yeah, it's not constant, but people go in and out of there.
They're just maintaining a previously gravelled road, or it's been gravelled for...
Two residences.
At some point, somebody paid to have it done.
Yeah. Requested road improvements and gravel in 2004 was when it was done. Comes once or twice a year to stay in his trailer. I spoke with him, he's 78 years old, he's only one that ever stayed in his trailer.
I have a question, did you take pictures of the road to determine the need for this gravel that we hauled out there?
I go look at it. I didn't take pictures, I didn't know, we have to take picture every time we stumble over a weed or something. I can't go out there, just have a road and take pictures of this, this is.
I was just wondering how the project came to be, I mean, I was out there on that road.
I know you were.
In a, yeah, in a little two-wheel drive car, and I didn't have not one bit of trouble, nor did I really see that it was in bad shape.
Well, we'd already gravelled it four years out there.
There was no, no, there was...
They were maintaining a previously gravelled road, and there's not anything wrong with that, nothing.
I don't know where you're coming from with this.
I guess I'm just questioning how these projects happen, because what you're telling me is that if someone writes in and makes a request, that you'll do that for them. And I find it interesting that that seems to happen for certain people, and then other people that make legitimate requests for years on end, don't receive any response, or in fact, you throw away their requests in the garbage. So I'm wondering how, how we're going to remedy this situation.
You guys are doing a fine job. You're doing it the way it's supposed to be done.
That situation that I know of...
You don't remember...
When I get a request from you to do something, the board gives me a letter, and then requests we talk to the person, take after their request, that's what I did.
So we, we don't...
So you don't look at me, I just went out and picked it, because it's so and so.
We don't remember all of the complaints that we've had in the year 2017 of the people who have come and said that they've been before the commission, and spoken with either one of you repeatedly, and had their requests ignored. We don't remember this, or are we choosing not to remember it, or are we just...
You guys done. You can leave if you're done, this can go on forever, she's not going anywhere with this. You're doing what you're supposed to do out there.
You seem to be defending the tactic of responding to certain people and ignoring others.
Not to certain people, people who get requests, and that's the only one you've given me from here, since I've been here.
You don't remember being upstairs in the courtroom with, there was almost some shouting over someone being so upset that for three years they had requested culvert repair?
A lot of this goes back before I was here.
No, no, I'm just talking about the past three years, just in the most recent three years, that's all.
I, I believe we, this needs to come to a conclusion, this is ridiculous.
Why is it that you're defending that tactic?
You are dismissed, thank you. Thank you for your time, and have a good, good holiday.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Commissioner, why are you defending that tactic?
They're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
I am not defending anything.
If you want to sit here and nitpick on everything, then you go right ahead.
I will not have my department heads crucified like you're trying to sarcastically crucify them, that is ridiculous. Is there anything else to come before this commission today?
There is no such thing as a crucifixion, I'm sorry, if you're looking for that, you can get a time machine or go to other parts of the world.
You guys have, excuse me, Alexis, you guys have a set format of documentation to address each issue that comes to you on the county roads. So if I come up and I want it over on Lynch Hill Road, section so and so maintained, you take my name down, the date I talked to it, and then you put it into a meeting for discussion?
No, do you call the highway department and request it?
Yeah, we can.
They have a form, they have a form that they fill out, and when they get to it, they get to it.
Terry, up until this year, they had no such form, it was the complaints that came in this year that created the form.
So you have some way of documenting that I contacted them, and then it comes to you?
As of this year, it doesn't come to us.
So who makes that decision?
The two that were sitting here, that they dismissed in the middle of a crucial conversation.
They prioritize stuff, and they get to it when they have the opportunity.
Okay, so they do go out, they look at it, and they don't answer to the board?
You want us to approve everything they do every day?
If it's a major, a major project, you probably should.
They come in and talk to us if they're the major project.
Okay, so then you do talk to them.
If it's something out of the ordinary, they'll do.
Well, remember the rains we had all in springtime, how it washed all that stuff out? Would that be an incidence, where they come in and say, section so and so road was washed out?
They told us, you know, we talked almost every week of the flood damage there, repairing on the southern part of the county.
Okay, so then you do do some of that?
If they bring it to us, but we don't, we don't micromanage them.
It depends on if it's a personal point of interest for the people that sit on the board, that's what it comes down to. Because if it's a personal point of interest, then they'll talk about it all day long, and if it's not, it gets ignored.
I just want to know if there's documentation, paper trail to what's going on. That way, if somebody complains, then you can say, we have this logged in at this date, they talked to us, or a individual representing the board, about this, and then we addressed it.
There is no such process.
That would be a way to eliminate all of this, he said, she said, you're getting priority treatment over me because I'm out.
We had a lady, we had a lady sat here one day and told us that her husband had talked to him three times about doing something. I went and talked to her husband, and you know what her husband told me? No, I didn't talk to him, I talked to my blade man. She came into this meeting and accused Michael of not responding to her husband when her husband hadn't even talked to him.
The thing is, we need some documentation, then we can alleviate all the finger pointing, fish shaking, shouting matches upstairs. At this day, so and so talked to the proper person, now who is the proper person that you talked to?
The highway department, that's where you make the call.
Okay, but who is, Michael O'Hare, and who's...
It depends on who's there, usually Liz, usually Liz answers the phone and takes the request, and then passes it off.
But shouldn't it be a supervisor?
It shouldn't be.
No, she just takes the request.
Or her, or she's the office manager.
Oh, okay, so yeah, she would be...
But, but yes, instead of calling them individually, they should be calling the highway department.
Okay.
And giving the highway department a chance, and if the highway department then doesn't follow through, then their next resource...
So you understand where I'm going with that?
Yes, I understand.
Let's make a paper trail.
Okay, I can answer your question, because right under the Director of Public Works' job description, marginal functions, says, answers and provides follow-up to citizen inquiries, et cetera. So it is their job, there was never a form until this year, until we had all of these complaints, and there were people who came in here in person and expressed that they had spoken to these people in person, and nothing was done. And now, once there was pressure, there was a process that was formed, it was already in the job description. Was there a follow-through process? No. There is now paperwork being tracked, so to speak, but even when you ask for an assessment of a job that was done, all you get is a report based on, you know, how many loads out of each gravel pit were hauled, or how many loads to a particular area, or the people that worked on that particular section.
I see.
What I was told at the department meeting, when we had the highway department meeting with everyone, is that each blade operator is responsible for his 100 miles. So you break the county up into these sections, and there's a color-coded map if you want to see it, and each blade operator is responsible for those 100 miles. Culverts, bridges, everything, as far as inspecting them, updating, making notes or notations about what needs done, or what could, would, should. And from that point, it would be up to the supervisors to determine a plan of action. That plan of action doesn't exist. I've asked for it, they're going to laugh, because apparently they secretly have seen it, but I haven't, because it hasn't come to this table.
Okay, well, back in the day, word, mouth communication would work, but evidently now it's not, so we need some kind of documentation stating that John Doe taught.
There is documentation, Bob.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking, and you, okay...
They log in, time of the sun, call, and everything.
Okay, and so then, do you, or any one of you periodically check that?
Check the, what they've done, what they have done.
Just to see, kind of, you know, not micromanaging, but looking at, okay, I've had A complaints in section A, I'm gonna go find out as a commissioner.
Well, if someone contacts me... Well, if someone, if someone contacts me about a problem, I go with it.
Okay, well, so you do.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm getting at. So it does need to be looked into and you're doing it.
Well, I mean.
Not every day, but.
If you call me up and say, hey, I got a hole in a culvert out here, mile east of my house. I'll go out and look. I'll call Michael, but I'll go out and look also.
That's not what I'm saying.
He's talking about administrative duties.
I'm talking about, do you go to the road and bridge department? Excuse me, Alexis, didn't mean to cut you off. The road and bridge department periodically and say, gosh, we've had a lot of complaints here. I'm gonna go find out why.
Well, if I have a complaint, I do. I don't have, I.
Well, it kind of sounds like there's a lot of them lately.
I haven't been getting any.
Okay, so, but is there a person that should be?
I got a, I got a phone call the other day from a person clear up on the county line north of Denmark thanking us for cutting the trees down the road so they can get down to the condo.
See, nobody's saying you're doing everything bad. I just want to know if there's paper trail and a way to address these issues so people don't feel like they're being singled, singled out or ignored or.
You're always gonna have people.
I know, but you have your documentation there to state.
They may, they're, maybe they got something out there that is a concern to them, but when you look down the progress.
Does it benefit everybody else?
Yeah, prioritizing the West, you gotta get to the priority projects.
You understand where I'm going with this?
Have you seen the priority list, Terry? Have you seen it?
No, I haven't.
Have you, Mr. Chairman, Aljo?
I don't have.
Have you seen the priority list of the jobs?
No, I have not.
Okay, so how are we going to sit here as a board of three, talking to two people in charge of 25 other people who are responsible for 1,000 miles of road? How are we on a, we spend maybe an hour a week on roads and bridges. How are we going to decide what this priority list is? Because we haven't seen it.
We don't, I don't decide, they do. It's their, it's their department, not mine.
But you've taken it upon yourself in years prior, not just this year, to determine who gets gravel and who doesn't on, upon individual request? We have three examples of people who have been given a half mile to three quarters of a mile gravel free of charge because we were doing that to their home on a, on a road that stopped, the gravel stopped and then they built a house and we went a half a mile, three quarters of a mile, et cetera. We have another issue about graveling a non-gravelled road this year.
For two and a half miles.
Now we're applying, regardless, now we're applying gravel to a previously gravelled road that's, that's travelled maybe two weeks out of the year. And so when you don't have continuity between your decision-making process, then people are wondering why one way this way, why one way that way? And yes, I do get a lot of complaints.
Previously gravelled road, that's why.
But now you're saying that you will make that micromanagement decision? And in other questions, you won't?
Let, let's go back to last week. We're working on an agreement where someone is gonna pay part of the cost to gravel a road. From that day on, we maintain that road at no cost to them. Just like all the other gravel roads out here that we're doing.
Okay. But I'm not opposed to what, I'm not opposed to what that arrangement is.
We're gonna go out, we're gonna gravel this road. And we're never gonna spot into black spots on it. Is that acceptable? Okay.
Well, I think that's why part of the arrangement.
Gravelled road that we spotted into black spots, just like we do all over the county.
But if you listen back through some of our conversations, we'll, we will hear that we don't have any gravel or we're searching for gravel. Then other people come in and they make appointments with the commission to tell us that there is gravel piled in their gravel pit and we have let the contract expire and we have never hauled it out. So we have to start acknowledging that there is some mismanagement going on.
They did not sign the gravel agreement and send it back. We didn't.
We failed to extract the gravel from the property before the expiration.
In that area. You want us to go and load it, haul it clear north of Sylvan?
I, I can show you the map where we've been graveling and it's been all around. Actually, it looks fairly evenly spread. I have it here somewhere. If you'll look, it's, it's quite.
Yeah, I know.
Diversely spread. There's a little heavy concentration around the schools, you know, the school areas and routes to get from certain towns, but it's pretty well, in 2016 even more so. And I know we didn't, we didn't gravel as much this year because of the weather. I get that.
We always try to keep piles in the pits. That way if we go to haul out of that area, the pile's already there. We don't have to get a dozer in there and try to pile as we're hauling.
But what I'm saying is if we don't have anyone keeping track of the gravel pits, for example, we just had a debacle over, we just assigned an abatement because someone was taxed for one that's not open, someone else's wasn't the right size. We didn't have an accurate map. The first time we ever even mapped them and turned them into the appraiser was this year. So these things are, we're starting to get the ball rolling on that, but we can't just keep ignoring and saying everything's fine. That's, that's not good administrative work.
This commission will stand adjourned until Thursday, Friday, I'm sorry, Friday at 10 o'clock where we will work on payroll, accounts payable and do any transfers that need done. On behalf of myself, I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas. And we will have our regular meeting on the second day of January at 10 o'clock in this room. Thank you, have a Merry Christmas.